It's been difficult. We're on our 12th round of budget cuts. But we've been lucky in that we've been able to make strategic cuts so things. And this kind of planning will, without a doubt, help us because public health takes its direction from the community. We need to know what the community wants. There's certain things we have to do by law. We will be controlling communicable disease whether anybody thinks it's important or not. I mean, you know, if we're doing our job, you're not even going to know that we're doing it. But really, understanding where can we put that 25 percent of our time that isn't mandated? Where does the community want us to focus? Where can we bring our expertise? We're limited. We're only 60 people. But we're 60 people who really believe in this community. And so it will help that. The other thing is that we hope that we'll be able to do what we did with our last couple of needs assessments, which is through this process of prioritizing issues, we distributed that not just to the partners who work in health, and this has helped with a little H, that broader health. We made sure that the partners understood that, but also the -- we're very lucky enough, we have a robust group of funders who like to fund health issues. They also adopted those priorities. So if you looked across, for example, at the Tobacco Master Settlement grant process through Health and Human Services, every single application that we received speaks to how it aligns with one of the strategic priorities. We expect that that will also be the case here. And as for -- these are the -- I neglected to mention, this is the sort of what we're calling the Core Support Team. These are the institutions that have actually donated both time and money. Money's really important. We've hired a contractor particularly for the community outreach portion of this, who specializes in actually getting out into communities and bringing out people who don't traditionally come when you ask people to come to a town hall meeting. Because we really do want to get to those individuals and hear what they know about their community and what they'd like to see in their community. So we're actually putting some serious money behind the process so that we can get something that we have some confidence reflects the broad swath of Napa County.
And I just wanted to also recognize some of those similar partners, I think, participated on Saturday here in Yountville at our third annual wellness fair.
Yeah.
And I suspect Samantha Holland-Wagner may have been mentioning that later in a staff report, but I wanted to recognize her work, as well as Elizabeth Glumbertari and her team from St. Joseph's and Queen of the Valley for what they did, and several vendors that came providing their health expertise for our community.
As a community, you really are leading the pack in the county, without a doubt, taking a really conscious look at how to improve, how to have really healthy opportunities for your community. And you have some leadership here that really takes that seriously, and it's very exciting for us because you can count on us coming to tap you in many ways. And I'm sorry I was out of town. I saw that you were having a wellness fair, and I would have loved to have been here. So thank you again for your time. We really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you for doing double duty tonight, also.
Go, Frau.
We have one more presentation. We welcome Steve Letterer, Director of Napa County Department of Public Works, to tell us a little bit about Property Assessed Clean Energy Program, also known as PACE.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I bring you the Jerry and Steve Traveling Road Show. Introduced --
I didn't see you there.
Introduced Jerry Gill with Sustainable Napa County, and also --
I snuck in when the power was out. I didn't see you. Sorry.
My superhero costume came through the roof.
Nice. Thank you.
Yes. And actually, I appreciated Justin Rial's and PG&E's presentation about something that went wrong on Silverado Trail that was not my fault. So that's good for this week.
You don't know that for sure yet.
That is a valid point, but at least so far. Yeah. So just want to talk a little bit about PACE. I was actually here, I don't know how many of you remember, but about three years ago, I was here to talk about this same subject. PACE is Property Assessed Clean Energy. The basic concept of PACE is that property owners can borrow money from a pot of money, make energy efficiency or other type of energy improvements, and then pay that money back on their tax bill over time, as opposed to doing the, you know, the kind of traditional loans. PACE was founded, the concept of PACE was founded around 2008, 2009 with Assembly Bill 811, or AB 811, which allowed jurisdictions to create essentially mini-financing districts to, again, allow this borrowing and then pay back on tax bills. The projects that are allowed under PACE are actually considered pretty broad: energy efficiency programs, renewable programs, and even water efficiency programs, because the connection between water and energy. Again, the history, I was here in roughly 2009 talking about what I'll call PACE 1.0. It was the first attempt to get the program started. There is a statewide joint powers authority known as CS-CDA, which the county is a member of, you guys are members of as well, whether you know it or not. And CS-CDA was creating in 2009 a PACE program that they invited the county and the cities to join. And we were kind of actually well down the path of joining. Certainly, the county was committed, and I believe most of the cities were as well. And unfortunately, right about that time, Fannie, Freddie Mack and Fannie Mae, who are obviously brilliant at analyzing the mortgage market, as we all know how well they did, they decided that if PACE got going, somehow that would just crash the housing market. And they threatened to sue anyone who was doing a PACE program, and essentially, all the PACE programs ground to a halt at that point, under the weight of Fannie and Freddie. But over time, CS-CDA has come back with PACE, and I'll call it PACE 2.0. And again, this is a statewide program. They have already launched, CS-CDA already launched their Phase 1, which included 14 counties and some number of cities. And they are focusing purely on commercial at this point. Fannie and Freddie are still out there. The residential market is still basically frozen because of that. But CS-CDA figured that they'd get started, they'd launch a program dealing with commercial, industrial, multifamily housing, and that we would bring along residential later if the legal issues resolved themselves. CS-CDA is, will be the administrator of the program. It actually won't be administered here in the county. The CS-CDA would be the, well, as I said, the administrator. Essentially, they'll handle just about everything. The last time we did this, CS-CDA actually asked for a cash contribution from individual members. They're not doing that this time. The program is free to join. Essentially, they've sort of worked out, they needed money to sort of work out all the bugs and the details and all of that. And over time, that's really happened. So there is actually no cost to join. There's no administrative burden on the town or cities. There's really no, or very little administrative burden on the county even, other than in our treasure and tax collector's office, where we're actually the ones putting the assessments on the tax bills and collecting the money. But even that's relatively minor. The benefits to your citizens is essentially if you choose to join, then your citizens would be eligible to apply through CS-CDA for loans in order to do these energy efficiency projects. And if they don't want to, then they don't have to. The county will probably do some marketing of the program, as CS-CDA will. I expect Sustainable Napa County, particularly through their Napa County Energy Watch, PG&E contract will also help push it. But beyond that, there really is, I really don't see any downside in the town joining, and certainly the upside is, again, to make the program available to their citizens. County has already basically made a commitment to join. City of Napa has basically said they were going to join us. City of Calistoga is actually having the same discussion right now. They're having it without me because you guys got started late, but that's okay. I didn't really want to go up to Calistoga tonight, anyway. And essentially, next steps, again, if the town is interested, we would need you to pass a resolution. And I've provided your city manager with a copy of a sample resolution. But essentially, we need a resolution saying that you're interested in joining. The county will then take all of the city resolutions along with our own and do one county-wide resolution. We'll ship that off to CS-CDA. They'll enroll us in the program. They intend to launch Phase 2 essentially as soon as they get a group of counties together, which should be relatively soon. And with luck, the program would be available for citizens to join probably in the spring. So I think that's about it. What I'm essentially asking is if you're interested in joining, and if you are, to take action at a future meeting to adopt a resolution, saying so.
Thank you. Are there any questions about the presentation? Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I have a question. It's more of a technical question regarding the loan.
Yes.
We have some affordable houses in town. So if they decided to do this, they would take out a loan and have the lien on their house. Now, as being part of that, the town, we subordinate that loan. So we may or may not, we work with them as closely as possible even, know about that. Have you guys talked through that issue?
Yeah, but the nature of these loans is that the original, actually, let me take a step back. The original PACE program was the idea that, for instance, the county or somebody would come up with a pot of money, and that's where people would be borrowing the money from. Sonoma's program is actually set up that way. Sonoma's using their own cash to fund these. What the CS-CDA program is, is essentially each individual applicant will apply to CS-CDA, and CS-CDA will take that request to a bank. So essentially, each project is individually financed. There is a requirement that if there's already a lien on the property, if there's already a mortgage on the property, that the property owner will need to go to their mortgage holder and get permission before they can do so. So for instance, I'm not sure exactly what your arrangement is, but for instance, if the town already has a, is holding a mortgage on a piece of property, and that property owner --
No, we have to subordinate it. So for example, if you had an affordable house in town, you would go to Wells Fargo and tell them. But the town would also want to know that it be, because these things can get complicated, and we don't want to
Yeah. Well--
--over encumbered property, so.
Yeah. Well, and I don't think a bank would either. Because again, each of these projects is going to be individually assessed by a bank before they loan. So if, for instance, if a property owner is already heavily encumbered, and they want to borrow a whole lot more money, when they take that loan to the bank, chances are the bank's going to reject them.
And just to interrupt, that scenario is unlikely, since we're talking commercial properties anyway at this point. If it goes on to a future phase where they integrate back in the residential, then there may be that kind of scenario.
Right.
So this excludes now? Because it used to include, but now it's going to exclude residential?
Right. It will include multifamily, in the sense of somebody who owns an apartment building. But individual residential will be excluded until the Fannie-Freddie thing settles out, if it ever does.
That'll be 3.0, or 2.5?
Kind of 2, yeah, kind of 2.5.
Okay.
The residential's actually built into this. It just won't be energized until the legal stuff solves itself. If the legal stuff solves itself, actually, kind of with a, if you will, with a click, you know, the residential could get going immediately because it's built into it. But it's not active until the legal stuff solves itself.
If I may, I just want to interject and try to answer Councilmember Mueller's question. The current process and the documentation that we have on most of our affordable purchase property works. There's a requirement that the town is notified, and I will let you guys know. You know, we have refinanced several. In fact, Michelle and I just executed a refinance to support some homeowners today. In 99 percent of the cases, the process and the requirements in place work. I was going to say, to date, I think we've refinanced four of those properties in the first six months of the year. So in most cases, the lenders are notifying, and we exercise new documents, put new loans, and we coordinate that through our partnership with Napa Housing Authority. So I think in most cases, the structure we have in place does what it's supposed to do. And I do understand and do get the council's sensitivity because we do have that one issue. But knock on wood, that will not be a replicable situation.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just wanted to, again, re-clarify, because this isn't necessarily for residential at this time. So it is truly in spring, your expectation's spring, you didn't say 2013, that's my assumption, would be for multifamily and commercial.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, the residential, there are a couple of things working to try and resolve the residential. There are a couple of lawsuits. The state of California and the county of Sonoma actually sued the federal housing administration, who was essentially regulating Fannie and Freddie. And that's made some progress, I suppose, but not very much. And Mike Thompson actually also has a bill that he introduced into Congress that would hopefully resolve some of these issues. And we all know how well Congress is working these days, so I'm not terribly hopeful on that front either. But it'll solve itself eventually.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
No, I just wanted, because it had been very clear to me that you were talking about commercial properties and not residential, single-family homeowners.
At least for the moment, yeah.
Right. Great.
Yeah. I think ideally, it would be nice if all, if the county and all five cities joined, or four cities and a town, joined, just so that you were, you know, it was available essentially to everybody who lived within the boundaries of the county. If the town chooses not to join, that's okay. I mean, the others can move forward. So it's really entirely your choice. You don't hurt anybody by not doing it, but we do think it's a good program.
Great. Thank you.
And just to reflect for the council, because we do have two new council members, this council was actually in the process and had provided preliminary policy direction prior to the litigation. And we were actually in the stages and had all of the draft resolution to join the program. So that's kind of why we just wanted to kind of brief everybody. And if that's the consensus, I will be bringing back a resolution to enter into the program because I will echo Mr. Letterer's comments. There's really no downside, other than if we don't do this, our commercial and business property owners can't participate in the program. And it certainly doesn't seem on the surface to make sense to deny some of our commercial property owners the opportunity to look at something that could be positive for their bottom line.
I think unless I'm seeing opposition, which I don't believe I am, that we're agreeable to revisit and potentially move forward with that process.
That would be great. Timing-wise, I was hoping to take an item back to my board late in October. So if you could do something early in October, that would be wonderful.
We will work with staff on that schedule.
There is a meeting on 10/2 that probably fits the timing.
I think we have an agenda item to add.
Very good.
Great. Thank you very much for your patience and presentation.
Thank you.
Ms. Gill, thank you for being here as well.
Under consent.
We're going to move on now to our public hearing. Sign ordinance amendment, the introduction and first reading of the ordinance amending the Yountville Municipal Code, Title 17, zoning Chapter 92, signs. Staff report, please.
Well, as you know, we've held several different workshops with the zoning and design review board, and with the town council. And out of these meetings, we received feedback and recommendations and direction from the council to incorporate these into a draft ordinance. That draft ordinance is before you for the introduction and first reading. And since we've brought this item to you on several different occasions, I think that we have consensus as to many of the items. We've seen it more than once. And I'm not going to go into each of those items in my staff report, but there are a few items I want to touch on. One of those being portable signs, and our new stronger definition and stronger prohibition against these signs. There is a category of signs exempted from the portable freestanding sign prohibition, and these are generally temporary signs, directional, open home, community center-type things. And the portable nature of these signs offers the best opportunity to advise the public and motorists and pedestrians where these activities are taking place. Another category of exempt signs are menu signs for food and beverage serving uses. And we're suggesting that they be permitted to be portable because of the effectiveness at a storefront or a restaurant entry, as long as they meet certain conditions on their placement. What we've added, since we brought this before you, is an exemption for signs that are located within a structure or behind a structure. And this is intended to capture the signs that may not be directly behind the sidewalk, but are visible from the right-of-way. And examples include the coffee caboose A-frame and open sign, the signs at the marketplace for Kalar chocolates, and Bottega that are between the north parking lot and the building entry. And it would require that these be placed behind the building, so they're obscured from the street, but they still serve a purpose to people on the sidewalks. The sign at Pacific Blues is another example. It's a directional sign, but since it's not temporary on the deck, we would require that it be a permanent installation. And the goal is to have more permanent signage where it's visible from the street and to limit the amount of clutter. Another item that came out of the last meeting, and we heard a consensus from the board, that we should not allow the exterior display of merchandise. And so we've added a new definition, and it includes goods or items that are representative of goods sold that are placed outside a business. And these are prohibited outright. There's not an avenue to bring these forward for discretionary review and approval. And what this would do is prohibit items like wine bottles at tasting rooms, the dress mannequins at Overland. But it would permit items that are not merchandise, that don't, that are not direct to the business. Getting off track. We've also maintained the definition of advertising statuary, and these are non-merchandise, three-dimensional objects that are intended to identify or advertise a business. And they're a specific category of items. They're intended to capture those items that directly call attention to a business. And this creates a review, or it's already within the ordinance, for design review and the scrutiny associated with that. It's important to note that these are just three-dimensional objects that are regulated under the sign ordinance. We have different parts of the code that would regulate landscape site and architectural elements, including landscape elements that beautify and contribute to a building or landscape frontage, and they're approved under design review. But they are not directly advertising or identifying the business. Another category that's reviewed outside of the sign ordinance are pieces of art or merchandise that are approved under a use permit review process. An example there would be Maison Ries, where there are conditions of approval as to the location, the number, and otherwise, the placement of these items. So the advertising statuary is not the only avenue for regulating these items, but it provides an option in the sign ordinance. And so the draft ordinance is before you for the introduction. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Great. Thank you for that. And we have heard of most of this report prior to this on a few occasions, but do, are there any questions, Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I have a question. Let's see, it's in section, I've got two versions here, so I'm kind of going back and forth because I put my notes on one. Section 17.92.050. So the changes that you've made are that pennants and buntings and flags, except as permitted in Section 17.9204, are prohibited. So are you saying that the only flags you can have are California and U.S. flags? Is that how I read that? And no pennants at all? And no buntings?
Well, when bunting is used as a holiday display, it would be permitted for two weeks before and after the holiday, but it can't otherwise be left up as permanent signage.
Okay. Or 30 days, which you can, you can pick any 30 days. You can put it up the day before and keep it up 20, or--
No.
Do you want two weeks before and two weeks after? Because it says, I think, 30 days in here.
No, we've included a definition that allows it two weeks before the holiday and two weeks after. So--
Okay.
--it's not completely open to display, but under some limitation.
So pennants and buntings, if they have, like, Santa Claus on the pennants, okay. Otherwise, prohibited. And the only flags are U.S. and California flags, unless it's a holiday flag. Is that how I read that? Because I--
Yeah, I was going to ask that question because this came up. We had freedom of speech issues--
Yeah.
Right.
--on flags before.
Flags are not strictly limited to just United States and the California flags, where they are non-commercial speech. Commercial speech would be regulated under this ordinance because it's identifying a business or other commercial.
So the pennants atop V marketplace, for example, would not be prohibited?
We would classify those as an architectural site design, that it's approved under a different process than signs.
Okay.
Don't know if that's clarifying, Councilmember Mueller?
Well, I guess I'm just back to the flags, because in section, I'm just going to read in the old part.
Flags that are acting as commercial descriptors would be prohibited.
Well, they're signs.
Right.
Yeah.
They're signs.
They'd be regulated under the sign ordinance.
Yes.
Okay. But you could still fly one, as long as you guys, and that would be a permitted sign?
They would have to receive approval.
So it could be other rules and regulations in the sign ordinance.
For example, we have some businesses that occasionally fly a French flag or something like that, and that is not prohibited.
Wait, I missed that. It's not prohibited?
It's not, because it's not an advertising sign.
So maybe we just need to clarify that language. And that's under 17.92.040, B3.
Right.
It says, "Flags, comma, United States and California state, comma." But if we can fly the French flag, shouldn't that be in there?
I'll need to work with the town attorney on that.
Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, members of the town council, it is clear that both the United States and California flags would not require any type of approval. Other flags of other countries could require approval, as long as they're not serving as, as long as they're not serving as commercial speech. If they had a French flag that said, "Eat at Bistro Jean Day," that would be a commercial speech flag. But I believe the interpretation would be that other countries' flags would need some form of written approval, but not a full process of application or anything like that.
Well, a good example, no, a good example would be--
You don't have a flag store in town, at least.
There's several examples. For example, the Bouchon displays during Bastille Days, bunting flags and various things, you know, seasonally associated with that event. We have some of our, you know, the Lavender Inn and Maison Fleury both have a French flag in addition.
You say that, yes, it's okay. It's not clear to me that's the case. If I read through this, where does it say that if I'm going to have a special event, that I don't have to come and get permission from the town to put up a flag?
I'm not saying they don't have to get permission.
All right.
That's the point.
So is it possible, is it possible that the concerns the council is expressing, if we were to add language in prohibited signs, Section -050, explaining the prohibited ones that are acting as commercial speech? Because we're not saying that. And that's what it sounds like we're intending.
That sounds like a good idea.
Pennants, bunting, and flags acting as commercial speech, except as permitted, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes.
Does that work?
Good call. I think that captures the intent of the flags we want to allow and those that are not.
If you look at 17.92.040, and these are all the various permitted use signage, some require written approval of the planning officer, some do not require specific approval from the planning officers, of the planning officer, and then other signs require ZDRB approval. That's in subsection C. Now, if you're looking at the, if you go to subsection B12, holiday-associated displays are permitted, provided they are displayed no more than two weeks. So the Bastille Day signage would fall under that category, would not require written approval from the planning director. The French flag or any other country's flag would not fall under B, which is an automatic approval. automatic approval, but would be more akin to subsection A, probably... Well, that's the area I think we have some challenges.
So I'll get back to my, my point of, can we just add the commercial language use prohibition?
Well, what you may want to do is just then put under subsection B3, United States and California state, and other countries' flags, which are not used for commercial speech.
Could you just say "flags," because we also have a crest that's a flag, and there's been some issues that warrant commercial speech. So I think that's the key language, is we want flags that are not commercial speech.
Regardless of whether they're a country's flag or not.
Right.
So whether that's in B3, or if that's, that's, doesn't matter to me if it's in B3 or if it's in 050A.
If it's in B3, then it'll be consistent with the new language in 1792.050.
Okay.
These things are prohibited, except what's in B3, so.
Okay. So we're adding language to B3, specifically prohibiting commercial flag usage in that context.
Right.
Or allowing non-commercial.
Whichever way staff would like to write that.
We can do that.
The most appropriate, okay. Are there any other questions, comments about the report?
Vice Mayor? This, this is going to point 12 under section B of 040, which has to do with holiday-associated What, Sandra, is included in holiday-associated displays? And I guess my question is, are we saying that you have to come and get a permit from the town to put up a Christmas tree on December 2nd?
No. These are loosely defined, and it's intended to capture the broad category of anything holiday-related. It's permitted under a section that doesn't need town approval in the ordinance, so you can do these, as long as you're not extending the use of it beyond a reasonable period of time.
So that's my question, is December 25th is Christmas, so if it's December 2nd, is that outside the two-week window? Are you technically in violation right after we have Festival of Lights and you want to put up a Christmas tree somewhere? I mean, yes? I think the answer is yes.
It's not put up a Christmas tree somewhere, it's put a Christmas tree in front of a business.
Uh huh.
Yeah. Wait till the 11th.
Yeah, it could limit that.
Is that what we wanted?
That used to a month. In order to be able to regulate the other uses of perhaps holiday that...
Bunting and pennants.
I realize that when I went to Costco two weeks ago, they had Christmas stuff already, so it's getting out of control, but I mean, we...
Also, I would note that items like the holiday light display are exempt from this. They don't fall within this definition. That's approved under a separate vehicle and allowed in town, so if it's part of that, it's okay.
So if you put up Christmas lights on a tree in front of your business on December 2nd?
And that would be in addition to holiday of lights?
He's talking about a tree outside the business.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter if it's lit or not.
Avocados hanging from it.
And that's what we're talking about.
I didn't say avocados.
You got a giant bunny out on...
Suggesting it's too short a period.
Well, it seems like it is in a certain case, which is Christmas, because we have a festival that's supposed to kick off Christmas, and then, I mean...
Well, let's exempt Christmas displays.
Well, I hesitate to start exempting any individual holidays.
Especially related to holiday, but yeah.
I think the question is, it may be simpler to look at a exemption for the festival of lights, display, lighting. Because here we use generically "display" because, you know, for example, this...
But that's not the issue that the Vice Mayor is bringing up. It has nothing to do with the lights. It has to do with the ability to put an object outside representing season.
I was about to head into that, which is, we're not interested, for example, in somebody putting that big bouncy air-inflated Santa Claus on their roof for six weeks.
Correct.
So that's why part of this was attempted. And I was trying to say, so maybe, you know, the question is, what type of display, you know, to try to clarify and limit the display, or do you want potentially to put four weeks?
Could I propose that this be a case-by-case review for any exterior holiday displays?
Exceptions may be approved on a case, a case basis.
Is this, I guess my next question, just as this comes up, is this commercially-zoned areas or the whole town?
Whole town.
The sign ordinance isn't intended to apply to commercial properties, it doesn't apply to residential properties.
Right, you think that's a clarification that's worth noting, is holiday lighting displays are not regulated. What you're talking about here is a regulation of banners, bountions and things that, you know, somebody made the comment, you know, you can't put the flag that says, you know, it looks French, and then you read the language and it says, you know, eat French food here. So it falls into that, that genre, where the display is screaming more as a sign than a seasonal display.
Well, I guess, but just to back up on this, because at the very beginning, purpose and application, the purpose of the chapter decision, the commercial activities of the town, I mean, I just want to make sure that the day after Thanksgiving, you're not getting in trouble with the town, and your neighbor's going to call.
Let's put...
I mean, I want to make sure your neighbor's not going to call, and we're going to say, well, the ordinance says you can't put up anything until December 11th.
But, yeah.
Because people are people.
They, while they could call, again, because this is intended to be a commercial regulation, not a residential regulation.
So I think that goes to this question of making more specific statements about commercial...
Yes, I think it's good.
...speech, shall we call it. So I guess that's where I get this idea that putting it in B3, for example, isn't sufficient, that I feel like this could get out of control and start to apply in other areas.
Would the word "commercial" holiday-associated displays be more succinct in this case, in your opinion?
No, that's not, that's not the point. I mean, it's already commercial. The point is the ability to have a season-long display.
Well, it's two things. So that's half of the problem, yes. That's half of my problem.
It's already stated as being commercial areas.
I'm just trying to...
Where does it say that?
You just read the...
I think Steve had a good suggestion.
But commercial activities, but we have to, we never define in here that a holiday-associated display, I mean, I don't, am I...
No, and Mr. Mayor and members of the town council, yeah, there is some overlap here because you do have issues as it relates, well, this is intended to be a commercial-focused sign regulation. You do have some areas that I think could be interpreted as being residential.
The point right before it is point 11, temporary residential signs, I mean, only they'll be located at the side of the event.
Right.
So that's why I look at this and don't say this applies only to commercial areas.
That, and then if you look at political signs, which we know are posted on residential properties.
Real estate signs.
Real estate signs. So having...
I think there's an opportunity to correct this, and it may be to say holiday-associated commercial displays, or commercial holiday-associated displays, and then include that exception except as permitted with, by staff with a, with a permit or with a specific approval, to give the flexibility to...
Extend it.
To, and to be reasonable, to allow certain displays, but to also give us the teeth to go after blatant violators of what, what most people would deem reasonable.
What are the teeth? That's another question, if I, if I may. I mean, we have teeth about these A-frame signs, we talked about that, but what are your teeth if, let's just say, bunting, for example, stays up too long?
Well, it is a violation of the Yountville Municipal Code, and violations are subject to a $500 fine. We don't go to that route right from the start. We try to work with an owner, get them to remove it. If they're not being agreeable or responding to a message, we may wind up fining them. So that's an opportunity to use against anyone violating the code, not specific just to the sign ordinance. And that's why that section on signs references back to the town's fines and penalties schedule, because it has a broader application.
Okay, so because that applies to all ordinances, and this is an ordinance?
Mm-hmm.
Got it.
And it would be the same code enforcement process that the council approved several months back, and there's that flow chart, if you recall, about how we get to the finished product, which is, again, hopefully compliance as opposed to prosecution.
So if somebody leaves their Christmas lights up all year long, they can be fined?
Wanted to make one point about...
Somebody leaves their Christmas lights up all year long in their house, they get fined after two weeks?
If they're not on.
Is that the idea?
No.
No?
It's not the idea.
Probably, because they would...
It's not commercial. We're putting the language "commercial" display.
And the other issue is, is it Christmas lights or just multicolored lights that they like to light their home with?
I'm just asking. I'm not saying that it says that. I'm just trying to think of the...
We're trying to make sure it doesn't say that.
It wouldn't apply to that situation.
Yes, I think you do, the council does point out some areas that we will need to, as we're bringing it back to you for second reading, clean up, make sure it's very clear that this is intended for commercial use. There are some uses in here or signs that would be approved in residential areas, but still subject to these same regulations.
Okay, and Bob, you had a point you wanted to make?
Yeah, would you go back to the purpose and application, the very first, on exhibit A, first page, it talks about assist in the commercial activities of the town, and under that 11, where you were citing temporary residential signs may only be located on the side of the event. The event we're discussing is indeed a commercial activity. It's a yard sale, estate sale, a limited commercial event, though it may be, it is commercial.
I'm sorry, where does it say that?
11, on page 11.
They, when you were, went up from 12 to 11 and noted, said residential, although we were discussing commercial, that residential activity, or the activity that's occurring in a residential area, is a commercial activity.
So I might suggest that we add those examples to define what that means, because it is misleading?
Those are in the definitions, and they reference back all the different sections in the code back to the original.
What, Mr. Mayor, if I may, in some of these areas, they seem to be the overlap, I think all we need to do is, for example, on political signs, political signs anywhere within the town's boundaries shall not exceed eight square feet. Real estate signs within, anywhere within the town's boundaries shall be limited to one non-illuminated sign per structure. They shall not exceed six, so we make sure that that's clear as to those specific signs. We are not just talking commercial, but we're talking anywhere within the town, boundaries of the town. And then if we go to the, the issue of the holiday displays, I don't know if you want to have inflated Santa Claus in June in somebody's front yard, but, you know, if you do, if you don't, again, language is such as where it says "holiday-associated displays" anywhere within the town boundaries. That's, that's, that's a policy call from the town council.
Right. And that's why I pointed out, it doesn't say limited to commercial zone, it says "commercial activities," which could occur in a residential area. Real estate sales, yard sales, estate sales.
That's a good distinction to bring up, for sure. Are there any other points that we haven't already addressed? It sounds like staff is going to work on specific language that works to alleviate the concerns that have been expressed by council, but are there other points that haven't been addressed yet?
Well, I have, another one, it's probably just clarifications. It's under the 1792.050. You're talking about signs that are affixed to utility poles and bushes and rocks and stuff like that. So this, what about a stop sign? Like at the end of my street, there's a stop sign connected to a utility pole. Are signs like stop signs, yield signs, all those other signs, are those, we don't govern those?
Not under this ordinance. Those are for street safety, and those are regulated and under the states and highways code, and they're permitted.
Okay. So you can't attach any to...
And they're also exempted under, do you know what section that is, Bob?
I was just looking for that.
Those are governed by the Streets and Highways Act.
Okay, so that doesn't apply, okay. That was the only thing I had. And same way with our utility trailer that flashes, you know, schools in session and stuff, that's all under that other section.
That's an exempted one as well for traffic safety, so that's not...
It's not a sign, okay.
But it does prohibit somebody buying one of those and putting it on their property and leaving it.
What are we talking about regarding, somebody puts up a garage sale sign and attacks it on to the hounds?
Those aren't permitted.
So immediately removed.
Those get confiscated when we see them.
Very specific about how they're going to be displayed.
Great, okay, good, good language. Any others? Vice Mayor? What other displays do you want to put out?
I'm back to the avocados.
Okay.
Under 050, prohibited signs, section C is exterior display of merchandise. And I recall we had this long and tortured discussion about this last time. Are there exceptions in here, or is that just that line?
Prohibited outright. It seemed that there was a consensus among four of the members to not allow those.
Was I the one member?
No.
No, I was. I was the one, I was going to be more permissive than the rest.
Okay, but does this apply to, use Masonry as a great example, of somebody who puts out a piece of art out front?
If it's not approved under their use permit as to those permanently displayed art pieces, they wouldn't be able to just go move one out onto the front porch during the day and then back in at night.
They could come and say, we would like to do this as part of the program, and they could, is that possible to get any...
It's possible to get approval under a use permit.
Wow.
But are we going to then say, well, under 17.92.050, you can't do that? So don't even ask for a use permit to do that, because it's excluded? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying, and my question would be, what there, what there isn't is a catch-all exemption or catch-all provision that allows the planning officer to give approval to items such as that? So that, we have a whole list of those permitted without approval, those that are prohibited, but if the council wants to give direction to staff to include some sort of overall governing flexibility for the planning director to have judgment calls on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, I mean, like, commercial merchandise. Sounds like we're going to prohibit, you know, no wine bottles, no wine barrels, none of that. I mean, that's what's on the table right now.
Well, no, a wine barrel wouldn't be an item that is generally sold by a business. It's specifically merchandise.
Oh, but a wine barrel, I mean, a wine bottle.
So I guess my question is, and this is a council question, is I, my impression, and maybe my memory is powered by P Gini, I don't know, is that I thought we were going to have the ability for businesses not to willy-nilly put things out, but to come and reasonably ask for, hey, we sell art, these are spectacular pieces of art, this is how we want to do this. And I know you were talking about being more permissive, but I had kind of expected that would be an item that wouldn't be flat-out prohibited, but that one item would have the ability, even if you go to the ZDRB, there's, there's the ability to have a program that you could do that. I don't know if the rest of the council feels that.
No, the majority of the council did not feel that way. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So we were all here having that conversation.
Can we, can we figure out, because that was not my impression?
Let me, let me clarify. This is a sign ordinance, and so under the sign ordinance, you can't get approval for exterior display of merchandise. You could get approval to display items as part of your use permit, which is separate and apart from the sign ordinance. So the artwork at Masonry is not considered a sign regulated under this ordinance, it's approved under a use permit. So there is somewhat of an exception. This is merchandise under the sign code.
And we approve that for that example?
Pardon me?
So when we approve that use permit at Masonry, we approve the external at that time? Okay.
There was regulated allowable landscape art. And when it goes beyond that allowable, that's when it became prohibited.
If I may ask a question, Mayor, but someplace like Overland, who doesn't, I don't think they would operate under a use permit. I don't know.
I'm sure that they do operate under a use permit. It isn't one that's been approved during my term here, and that merchandise seemed to be one of the items specifically called out by the council, at least as I understood it at that August meeting. And that merchandise seemed to be one of the items specifically called out by the council, at least as I understood it at that August meeting.
That's how I remember it as well.
The concern was racks of clothing and really everyday items that could be sold from that location.
Displays that could accent the frontage, like the bicycle in front of Jean T. was not prohibited. If it was a bike shop and they had a bike out in front of the business, that would be prohibited. That was the intent of that action, if I recall.
Correct.
T-shirts in front of a clothing shop would not be prohibited. I mean, would not be allowed. They'd be prohibited.
Correct.
So all I'm saying is, I feel like that was not my recollection, and I don't know that I feel like, looking around, that that's what the intent, I mean...
Well, I know that, what I threw out on the table was that I was open to outdoor display, but I wanted to put some parameters around what that would be, and I just threw some examples out for discussion. So I am still open to having an outdoor display, you know, that would, that's going to be limited, that's going to be tastefully done, and it's not going to be giant and flopping around and mechanical and, you know, things like that. So I am open for that, but...
And if there is the consensus of the board, that would need to be a change we make to this ordinance?
So my proposal, and Marjorie, I'm not sure, is that, that under permitted uses, that outdoor display of merchandise would be taken out of prohibited signs and potentially put into the following signs requires even ZDRB approval.
That's fine with me.
I think that's, that's what I had envisioned.
And as our town attorney also said, we, he, in his opinion, he didn't think we should just leave it open-ended, like, if you want something, come and talk to the ZDRB, that it would be good to put some parameters around, you know, what we would like to see or not like to see. So that was my recollection. I don't know. Arnold, you might have...
I'm going to get back to the question. Is the display of merchandise for sale at a business part of this discussion tonight, or not?
It is. There's a new definition that defines what that is, and it's prohibited by the Section 050.
So the issue of, it's under a use permit, that, we're not talking about that anymore. We're back to this language prohibiting that behavior. That merchandise for sale at a business, in this language, is prohibited outside the business?
Correct.
And now there's some council that is either rethinking or did not understand the previous direction that was understood by staff and some of us, that that was prohibited. Okay.
And if I could just, again, interject, I believe that the discussion we centered or focused around at the time was t-shirt shop out on the front sidewalk, you know, displaying the merchandise and saying, "That was not something we were willing to consider." Is that not what we all believed or agree at the time?
Yes, but putting it into something that requires approval is different than putting it into something that is prohibited.
No, we were talking about it being prohibited then, too.
Yes.
I didn't agree with that then, so...
I didn't agree with that then either.
And I didn't either. I was willing to let, have one rack and one shirt.
Staff would not have proceeded with our direction had three of the five...
Okay, well, I'm saying I want to change what I said before, apparently. Right, I mean, I, that's not my recollection.
Whatever the past discussion is, Mr. Mayor, we're looking for what the consensus is this evening.
So can I ask if there are any other questions, other than the ones that have already been stated about the language of this ordinance? Or is the council comfortable with staff making the modifications as discussed, not including this one item?
Is there going to be some clarity about commercial activity and this mostly applying to...
That was discussed, yes.
The only other thing I'd like to suggest, I had to read this many times, because it just seems like there might be an easier way to say in a bigger heading, "This is permitted." You know, "This is where you need to, you need to come and get approval for these types of signs. These things you don't need approval for." Something that's a little clearer, because it kind of weaves a little back in, you know, "You can do this, but then you can't do that, but then you can do this again." So I found that just a little, maybe some tightening up.
I think you found in the discussion we're having tonight, the problem is, there is no definitive list of do's and don'ts. That there are exceptions to every rule, and so those exceptions are covered as staff can cover them. That's my interpretation of how it's written. So are there any other areas?
With that one exception, I would agree with that, too.
With which exception?
The exception about the merchandise.
Merchandise being displayed outside?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, as we look to that issue for, in bringing this back to you, we may look to just take it out of the sign ordinance. Strikes me that display of merchandise, it's not a sign. It may fit somewhere else in the town's code. But we'll take a look at that. If it should stay there, that's where we'll keep it, and if not, we may move it to some other section.
But we still have to have a discussion about...
What you want.
Well, and the problem is, if the Chamber of Commerce puts shirts out that say "Yountville," they're selling Yountville merchandise. Is that a sign for their business? Or if, if Overland Sheepskin Company puts sweatshirts that say "Overland Sheepskin Company" out, is that a sign or is that a piece of merchandise?
Guess we'll work through that.
I don't know if we don't address it now, there's language that explains it, and tomorrow we have merchandise all over the sidewalk, because there's no language.
We do need the direction. I'm not suggesting we don't, that the council does not give us the direction. I'm just saying where it might be more appropriate to fit, but, yeah.
So maybe we can have a discussion, and the outcome of that discussion finds a home. So...
Like in the use permit.
If, if now the majority of the council is saying they do want to allow merchandise to be presented outside of businesses, then we'll figure out where that language should be placed. But if we're not changing from where we are, we don't need to find a home for it.
A thought for your discussion while you're looking at it, I also hear the council inserting the word "merchandise" occasionally, and you may want to think of this as a outdoor display. And if you're going to lean towards an interest in having a process that would allow for an applicant to come forward, I'm going to tend to concur with the town attorney that we may want to create a separate process that would allow for a outdoor display.
It's not mannequins.
An out, I'm just, don't get ahead of me. You're going to have to, an outdoor display require that an application be submitted and send it to the ZDRB. And I tend to think that it doesn't belong in the sign ordinance, because we're all over the place on what a potential outdoor display. For example, we've talked about the mannequins being not good. We've talked about, we're okay with the Bistro Jean T. bike. We're tripping over merchandise, because some people have inserted, "One item's okay, two's not." Is a wine bottle okay if it's a tasting room? So maybe the category is just generic outdoor display. Make the person come in, apply for a, you know, $500 application, explain what they're going to do, and, well, we regulate it that way, but not try to put it in the sign ordinance. So I don't, if that's what your interest is, we can move forward with the sign ordinance. Staff and the town attorney would have a little more work on how to write this new ordinance to bring forward this outdoor display permit, but it would be easier and straightforward, and then staff can think about what, what to put in that guideline.
Well, I have a comment on that. We have zoning districts for each of the residential and commercial zones, and they are explicit as to permitted and use permit uses. And if we want to add exterior display of merchandise as a use that requires a use permit, that would be something that comes before the council for review and approval specifically as to that element. And then we could take it out of the sign ordinance.
Is it currently in the sign ordinance where we say merchandise is not allowed?
No, that was...
It's in the new draft.
It's in the draft sign ordinance. It's not in the existing ordinance, nor is it found elsewhere in the code.
There's no existing prohibition of merchandise in front of businesses?
Not explicitly. We have the section on advertising statuary, and that does reference objects that are merchandise or representative of merchandise. We deleted that reference to allow non-merchandise-type objects.
So by deleting that language, we've created this loophole, sort of?
Well, what we were seeing was that there are very different displays of merchandise, these objects that are placed outside that may recall a business, but they're not merchandise directly. And we were noticing more businesses putting their wine bottles out, inching their mannequins out. So those were specific to merchandise, and they didn't fit this general category of advertising statuary. So we tried to be more specific by having these two categories. And based on the feedback that we received, I thought we wanted to prohibit the merchandise, but allow the other objects where they're non-merchandise and they contribute to the landscape or the site architecture.
Okay.
That was a discussion we had, correct?
Okay, so I'm going to propose, staff's okay with pulling this one specific item out of this ordinance and bringing it back for further discussion specifically about this item? And as the town manager stated, some draft language to that effect, we can start there, potentially.
There are places in the municipal code that it would fit.
And we're not leaving a void for some period of time where we have no regulation in place that if somebody decides they want to put a giant blown-up gorilla in front of their business, we can't say that's prohibited?
I think we could probably classify that under one of these prohibited items.
Let me, yeah, the gorilla, I think, would, the, but also, this is first reading, second reading, and then it doesn't go into effect for a 30-day period.
Okay.
So our current ordinances still are in effect until this new language comes into effect. What we would try to do is have this run concurrently with whatever we bring back to you for outdoor displays of merchandise, so that it always coincides, so that they would become effective law at the same time.
Could we, we could also have the first and second readings at the same time for that second ordinance?
Yes.
To catch up to this ordinance?
I can bring that back at the next meeting, both items.
Yes.
Well, you'll be two weeks behind each other if you do the first reading today.
If there's acceptance.
Which I don't think's a big risk.
Yeah, I'd like to get this one.
Well, but you could always, you can always bring back the second reading of an ordinance two weeks later.
That's fine. Okay, we're going to plan on that. We're going to bring draft language for this particular item at our next meeting. If it's two weeks behind this ordinance, so be it. And we'll leave it up to staff to figure out. I think we've covered this one more than fully.
The message you're sending is that if somebody wants to do something, we'll tell them, "Work on it. Get your application and concept ready, and we'll be ready to go soon."
Right. With that, is there action to be had on the revised sign ordinance as presented?
I would make a motion that we approve ordinance number 407-12 with revisions. An ordinance of the town council of the town of Yountville amending the Yountville Municipal Code Title 17, zoning, Chapter 17.92 signs.
And I'll ask, actually, either town clerk or staff, do we need to clarify exactly what the modifications are?
I think we have them, and it's an introduction in any way tonight, so you'll get another opportunity to bite at the apple.
So, and the reading has been waived by Councilmember Doren Becker's motion. Is there a second to that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we got through our one public hearing, and I forgot to ask if the public wanted to speak to it. Would you like to speak to that issue? Is your power still on at your house, as far as you know? All right, we're going to move, do we have any administrative or regular items?
No, there's none on your gun yet.
Staff, information reports, no?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
So, yes, none on our, none on the agenda.
Information reports aren't always.
I just want to note that we sent out a revised media release for the paving, which will be on October 2nd and 3rd. So just want to remind people on Vista, Fennel, Mulberry, and Washington, south of California, there'll be, contract will be doing work on those streets. So parking will be affected.
I'm sorry, what was the date again?
October 2nd and 3rd, Tuesday and Wednesday.
Is that our only report, staff report? Okay. Since none other are listed, is listed. Council reports, let's start with Napa County Flood Control and Water Conservation District. We took a tour of the Napa River flood control project at our last meeting to see all the site work, and they are vigorously working on getting all the in-water work done by their mid, I think it's mid-October deadline. So they're expecting to get that done. It's very impressive, if you haven't been downtown Napa lately, to see significant changes in some areas. Very complex project, clearly, but it really has made some great, great progress, thankfully. Napa County Transportation and Planning Agency, we meet tomorrow. We've had some summer breaks in those meetings. So we'll have a report at our next council meeting. Napa River Watershed Information Center and Conservancy, do we have a report?
No, we have not had a meeting. We have, the next meeting, I believe, is on October.
Yeah, I think many of the county meetings have taken their summer breaks this last month. League of California Cities Annual Conference, Councilmember Dornbecker and I attended. Councilmember Dornbecker, did you want to make a brief report on some of what you participated in?
Thank you, Mayor, I would. It was, I found it very interesting and informative. And one of the sessions that I attended was called "The Top 10 Things That You Should Know About City Finance Today." And I got a jewel out of it, I thought. Now, maybe you already do this. But one of the things that they suggested that each town should do would be to audit the property transfer taxes of the county for the cities. So I just thought that that, the way they, don't ask me to tell you how they explained that now, but it did make sense to me that the transfer, property transfer taxes are charged when a property changes hands. And sometimes that reporting, you know, that doesn't necessarily get back to the towns within a county. So I just thought you'd be interested to hear about that. And then my other favorite one was called, there were two of them. It was a general session called "For the Love of Cities" with author Peter Kagayama. And then he had an in-depth, smaller, well, I mean, well-attended. He was an excellent speaker, and he talked about different ways that cities can inspire their residents to get involved. And so at some point, he said that he would like to come to the Napa Valley, and I would really like him to come here and, and speak with every town. I actually thought that some of the, some of the programs that he showed, for example, a program of in a town where there were some ramshackle buildings and things, they invited in Tigers, who created actually beautiful art and revitalized a section of town that had been a really terrible area. And all of a sudden, little cafes started springing up, and all the building, all the building owners all around them decided to do the same thing. And it became a real, and I was thinking of that, actually, for the Highway 29 corridor in American Canyon, and I did mention it to them. But anyway, they were also at this event, and they loved it, you know. So there were some very creative and off-the-cuff ideas, but I thought that, you know, getting people involved is a very important thing, and I'd like to, you know, pursue. I want to get this, the author wrote the book "For the Love of Cities," and I want to definitely get that book, and maybe we'll pass it around.
I was able, any other parts of that? But that was a highlight. I would agree with Councilmember Dornbecker. I was able to get the book. He was signing books after his general session, and he actually already is coming to the Napa Valley to meet with city and town managers, apparently, an organization. Later this, it's either this month or next month. I don't know that each of the cities in town have the discretionary income to invite him to speak. I'm not sure what his going rate is, but he was very compelling, had some really great examples all over the country of small cities, large cities, allowing their own residents to embrace their love of their own cities and how they show that love. So it was a really fun presentation. I also attended some really educational sessions, one on mobile vending. It's gone well beyond just food trucks. It's involving many other things. It was pretty amazing, some of the examples they were showing of some of the mobile vending. We have... We have some entrepreneurs at work out there, I must say. Social media and how cities can use social media to outreach to the communities was also an interesting one. And the ever-present tools after redevelopment, how cities are trying to figure out what to do with their lost redevelopment funds. But also I was, I finished my term as the North Bay Division of the League of California Cities President, I'm now the past president, and Madeline Kellner of Nevada is now our Division President, so congratulations and best wishes to the new slate of officers. And again, the League really provides a very valuable informational service to us, so looking forward to continuing that activity. Any other, you have another staff report, Councilmember Mueller?
Yes, I do. This is some information that's now come out of the Upper Valley Waste Management Agency, so I'll give you a little background to help you kind of follow along, put it in perspective. Back in 1995, St. Helena, Calistoga, Yountville, and a part of Napa County, known as Zone 3, you know, I won't go into that, we formed a JPA, which is the Upper Valley Waste Management Authority. This is, and that Joint Powers Authority put together a franchise agreement with Cloverland Flats, and then later with our recycling center. They're two different companies owned by the same people. And at the time of the first franchise agreement, the company agreed to give $50,000 in free services. And this was supposed to be paid by the company, not by the ratepayers. Then, fast forward 11 years, another franchise agreement, and that franchise agreement went to 2015. Then, in 2006, they renewed the franchise agreement and extended it to 2025, and at that time, the company gave another $25,000 in free services. So we got a total of $75,000 in free services. So over that time, some jurisdictions, like Yountville, spent all their $75,000, while some of them haven't spent all their money yet, like the county hasn't spent all their $75,000 in St. Helena. So during this year's rate review, it was noticed that the free services had not been subtracted from the expense line from the company. So therefore, they really weren't free services. It was in fact the ratepayer who was actually paying for those free services this whole time. And when it was looked into, the accounting records going back, actually, they're only available for a few years, so you can't even go back to all these accounting records to figure out, you know, how everything really transpired. So the best estimate is that about $200,000, so that'd be, if there's four members, that's $75,000, that's $300,000. So the best estimate is about $200,000 of free services have been spent, or not spent, depending on your point of view.
Depends on how you account.
Yeah, depends on how you do your accounting. So, and this includes the $75,000 that we have spent. We actually have those records that we've theoretically spent that free services. So there's a proposal that, since there's $200,000 out, divided by the four member's agencies, that each one of the members would get $50,000 in new, real free services, if they're subtracted from the expense line. And this is going to come to the board on October 15th for approval. So what this would mean, if we approve it, and I'm certainly in support of it, is that Yountville would get, this time really, $50,000 in free services, which would probably fund our cleanup day for at least six years, depending on how we spend. So then we could postpone the inaction of the surcharge that this council passed for at least six years. Now, the other provision they're talking about is we could only spend $10,000 of our $50,000 a year, which would be up to that amount, so that, I don't really think that's a problem. So I really wanted to bring that to the council's attention.
And who did that data search, again? Who did, who, doing that audit?
Well, I did.
Oh, okay. I thought, so the board is taking up that at your next board meeting? I'm sorry, I guess I missed that.
I brought it up when I first discovered it, I went to the county and talked to the finance person there, they brought in Steve Letterly, they went back to the company and checked their records, and it seems like my finding was accurate.
But you're proposing to the board, then, the $50,000 shared out of the $200,000?
No, I brought the attention, I brought it to the attention, and it looked like these free services weren't free.
So this proposal's already agendized and it's going to be voted on, you're saying?
Yes.
The county is proposing?
Well, I haven't seen, the next means October 15th, and I haven't seen it, but yes, this is pretty much a summary of some information that Steve Letterly passed to, I don't know, Steve, you want to add something?
I think just to clarify, what is being proposed for the Upper Valley Waste Management Authority Board is that they will accept a settlement agreement with Upper Valley Waste Management in lieu of other action, and that settlement will result in the $200,000 distributed, $50,000 per entity, and that is what the board will be voting on.
Isn't this the very question that we asked when they came here?
It is.
And they just sort of looked at us like, "What are you talking about?" It's called off-balance.
It is. It's, it's, it's been interesting, and I will just say that the doggedness of the council member Mueller was appreciative by many folks, not by some, but the results were accurate when we raised the question, and you asked that point blank, and the proof was simply not there that it had been done as it said. And it's fairly typical, I don't want, it's typical in a franchise agreement that you may have a consideration, but usually the ratepayer is either built in, or free is free, and you can't have it both ways.
Yeah, I think the council will welcome not having to fund cleanup day in the future if it comes to that, certainly.
So we do think...
That would be a very positive outcome.
At the current price, it should, it should, you know, I'm going to say conservatively, five years, hopefully six, and then we'll have to revisit it at that point in time.
Well, if you remember, what we did was, based on the survey that they had done with our residents, we, without me, I believe, voted to allow them to actually charge a surcharge, continuing, sort of continuing for our residents to pay for it, and I'm delighted that that won't be the case. And I applaud you, Marjorie, well done.
Thank you.
Great, any other?
I would just like to make an announcement, the, we will be having a open house at our very own Yountville Library Branch a week from tomorrow, September 6th at 5:00.
On 26th.
Thank you, September 26th at 5:00 PM. And we really, this is going to be a formal recognition of the volunteer program that we have started here in Yountville for our library. It started Wednesday, September the 5th, so it's been going all month, and we have library hours that we didn't have before, that are fun, that are totally put together with volunteer time, so the library's now open on Wednesday, from, instead of from 11 to 5, from 11 to 7.
So the new hours are two hours a week on Wednesday, extending the Wednesday hours?
Right. Just, that's just our start.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
And that's been happening all of September.
Great. More good news.
Mr. Mayor, can I just mention one other thing? We have an art reception coming up this Sunday at 3:00 PM for the new installation that's going in at the community center tomorrow. A local artist.
Do we have the time that that's going to start?
3:00 PM.
3:00 to?
5:00.
3:00 to 5:00?
Yes.
Very good. Any other announcements, comments? I've got a few here, I did want to, okay? Please, go ahead. Councilor Hall?
For all those out there, on October the 19th will actually be a Texas Hold'em tournament that'll be hosted by the Yountville School Foundation in one of the Yountville Community Center buildings. So hopefully you'll see information out about town, I think there'll be some at the Yountville Community Center, the deli, and bring your A-game. It'll be a lot of fun, a lot of fun prizes, good food, good beer and wine, and hopefully people can participate.
Very good. I also wanted to recognize, again, Samantha and your entire crew that was out Saturday, most of the, all morning into the afternoon, and also I want to recognize the Yountville Kiwanis members who also volunteered at the Third Annual Wellness Fair and Kids' Day. Despite the lack of flu shot availability, we still had a nice crowd come in throughout the morning and enjoyed a really beautiful morning of educational vendors, as well as fun and games, so that was a nice event, and hope to continue seeing that for many years to come. I also wanted to recognize the Kiwanis, again, they were, they were busy these last couple weeks, especially with their Wormburner Golf Tournament, again, very well-attended and well-organized, so thanks to all the Kiwanis and all the funds that they were able to raise, where they support our community. And the Pathway Home also just had a golf tournament Monday, and that was to raise money for the Pathway Home, and again, a great community turnout to support that cause. They also just had as a partnership with the Tuck McGraw Foundation and the One Mind Research Organization that's spearheaded by Garen and Sherry Staglin and Patrick Kennedy, among others, but they had recently retired General Kierelli come here and visit the McGraw Foundation, the Pathway Home, as well as then attended the mental health special event at the Staglin residence last weekend, bringing somebody who's high-ranking, is one of the top-ranked generals in the country. Yeah, four-star general, here to see what is happening in our community, how our community's reaching out to support veterans, as well as those with special needs, mental health needs, was very satisfying and very impressive. We also have Yountville Days coming up, October 5th, 6th, and 7th. We have movie night, the movie October 5th is?
Cars 2. It's a good one.
Cars 2. And then we have the Chili Cook-Off on October 6th.
Yes, and we're still taking entries for that, so cash prizes, amazing trophies, and bragging rights.
And the annual Public Safety Throwdown will be in full effect, I'm sure.
Yeah, we're really trying hard to add DAP-A-Fire into that, too, so mix it up a little bit.
Absolutely, and then...
And hope for the rest of us.
Yeah.
October 7th, we then have our annual parade and festival, the parade starting at noon.
Noon.
And the festival starting at 11:00.
At 11:00.
For those that want to get their spots along the parade route or up at the park, and then that'll go until 5:00, I believe.
It goes till 4:00.
4:00?
Mm-hmm.
Some of us may hang out until 5:00.
Of course. We could use all the breakdown help that we have.
Exactly. But again, that's just one of our funnest and really best-attended events of the year, so October 5th, 6th, and 7th. With that, we see the list of future agenda items, do we have any need for closed session?
We do have a very brief update, six and a half minutes worth.
All right. We will, we will be adjourning out of closed session to our regular council meeting on Tuesday, October 2nd at 6:00 PM, so at this time, we're going to go into closed session. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And we see the power back on.